So we're up and going, so I'm calling meeting to order. I ask everyone to rise for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Int introductory roll call.
Trustee Campbell?
Here.
Trustee Thomas?
Here.
Trustee Brandt?
Yeah.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Baum?
Here.
Trustee Fritz? And Trustee Honey?
I'm present. So we have five here, one remotely, but I understand Dave that you don't qualify for one of the reasons to not be here. So officially, you're not here, but we're not voting on anything anyway, so it'll be fine.
Sounds good.
All right.
Cheers.
You don't have to hide anything. So, public comments.
I see no hands raised, no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Bring us new business. Anybody have anything from the regular meeting they'd like to discuss? Coming up a week from today. Seeing none, we're gonna move on then to update on historical buildings. John?
Yes, thank you. Just give you guys a quick update on a couple of things. The first one is the archaeological study that was done, the phase one archaeological study. You may remember in December, we talked about a series of historic structures the district has, and one of that sets of buildings is the Peachtree Farmstead. And at that time, there was a recommendation that it be put on a demo list. And we revisited it a couple of months later, I think maybe February, at which time we shared with you that because there was significant interest in the, from the historical preservation community, that we wanted to go ahead and put a little bit more effort into getting a more substantial history of the place. So we hired Midwest Archaeological Resource Services to come in and do that. They conducted that investigation, I believe it was in probably March and April and maybe even in May a little bit. They were out there for a few days. And the report has been done for a while. I just didn't have time to get it in front of you before now. So we have that report to present. And again, it's about the Peachtree structures themselves. I want to read just one quick section that really sums it up. It's on page five, and it reads, "No cultural material was recovered from Transx 1 and 2. Within Transx 3 through 6, a few pieces of undecorated white ware and clear flat glass were identified. These historic, non-diagnosed artifacts were noted and not collected, meaning they went back right down to the small post hole stakeout." These are typical artifacts found from a farmstead at this timeframe. There's no other evidence of the earlier log cabin that was, there was some idea that there may have been a log cabin there. They did not find any evidence of that. Very, the buildings are very common farmsteads seen in McHenry County of that timeframe. They're in poor condition, bad condition, and they're basically recommending clearance on this. I'm summarizing that paragraph, but that's really the summary of it. What we now have is this report and all of the other information we've collected about that particular farmstead, which really is kind of now clearing it for the opportunity to, when we get the resources or designate the right resources to it, to put those on the demo list and demolish those buildings. So with that being said, I'll really, on next Thursday night, no, next Tuesday night, at the board meeting, I believe we have a formal acceptance of the report. And that really will then, you know, the next time we decide that we have the resources for it, we'll start looking at budgeting to take some of those buildings down.
So do we have a list going now that even when we don't have the resources that's already started, that this would move on to then at that point in time? So we can move that on to that list without the resources?
Yes, every time that you, every time I brought something before you and said, "We recommend putting this on a demo list," it goes from "to be evaluated" to "to be demo." And we can start picking them off as we can. There's a lot of buildings on that list, as you know, we've talked about it before.
Right.
John?
Go ahead.
There's a lot of barn siding there, and in the process of demolition, does the value of that, can some of it be salvaged and sold to the advantage of the district? Or is that just too time consuming and doesn't work out in a positive cash flow?
Here's how you see the other ones of that. It does work, but not in two stages. We do it in one stage. And it's done because when we bid it out, the first time we ever saw it happen, we expected a bid for a barn demo to come back at, I'm gonna use a fictitious number because I don't remember, at $50,000 and it came back at $28,000 or $22,000 or some number like significantly less. And we were wondering why and how. We talked with the demo company, basically what they said, and you saw it when they did it, they went right around and they, well, they saw it all, took all the siding down first, and then when they dropped it, they took down beams and things like that, and were able to salvage what they could salvage. A bunch of it is not salvageable, but some of that, like barn siding is. So that is the way you kind of recoup that, is a lower cost on that.
So they figure that into their...
You bet. You bet.
Yeah, I've talked to guys that are in that business. Sometimes they, sometimes they get more than they planned on, and sometimes they get less.
Yep.
Price of lumber is pretty high, you know, a lot of it is.
It's been dropping this last week.
Okay, you're moving on to five, "to be" then?
Yes, and this is the, this is another follow-up to that presentation in December. And at that point in time, you may remember that we had some members from, I was, in this case, it was the director of the Historical Society mentioned working with a company called Holland Roofing, and said that they had done some innovative practices for them and were really good people to work with. The district had never worked with them before. So on Elizabeth's direction, we reached out to them and said, "Could you come take a look at some buildings that we want to take a look at?" We had a look at the three campuses of the McConnell Farmstead, Fox Bluff, the two buildings at Fox Bluff, and then the one that's down the road here, the Kennedy Way Station. Report is in there, I'm just gonna give a quick summary. Start with the Kennedy Way Station down here. The good news in the first paragraph there, the first sentence is, "The roof has several years of life expectancy on it." That's good. Not, you know, the roof isn't at least failing today. And then they have a couple of cost estimates, one for cedar shake and then they owe them for asphalt shingles. So now we know the costs of that, okay? We have a contractor, they were out there, they took a look and said, "That's what it will cost to do this." McConnell, in this case, they went up and they looked at three of the structures that are up there, because the other ones really have either roofs on them or intend to, we intend to put roofs on, we have the product to turn a roof on them. So the barn A, that's the, that's the small barn, the hand hewn barn. And again, they matched the cedar shake, because that's what we have in the house, and the chicken coop, and that's what's intended for the, what's called the granary up there. So they matched that, you see the prices there. Seventy-two thousand for the, seventy-three thousand for the hand hewn barn, the small barn, and $200,000, $201,000 for the large T-barn. Again, we have a price on it now, so that, you can see that. The last set is the Fox Bluff buildings.
On that, just a second, on that large barn, did we have like $50,000 we had penciled on that?
We had $62,000 estimated on that, and that's asphalt shingles. And when you do a calculator, if you use his number, he gave us two numbers on the Kennedy House down here. It's about 30% difference, and if you do the math on that $200,000, it takes the right to about $60,000 with asphalt versus, I think if we had said, bid us asphalt on that, I think we would have seen a number closer to that $60,000 to $70,000 range.
Because I've said, that's a pretty big jump from what was proposed earlier.
Yeah, yeah. But the ratio, I did the ratio before because I wanted to see, was I even close with the, you know, the sixty...
Sure. So you're saying that asphalt is 30% of secrets?
That's correct. Any other questions on McConnell?
No.
My only comment is that the A barn is described as severely compromised. It requires replacement of the plywood decking. It's $130 of sheep. He doesn't figure that into his $73,000.
Correct.
So it's possible that there would be a fair amount of decking that would need to be replaced.
Yeah, it, yeah, that's, that's the minimum cost there. And then, when, when we bid something like that, what we do is we go out there and we estimate, you know, it's gonna be 10 sheets or we're gonna estimate it's gonna be 20 sheets. And then we have them bid based on that, and then if it's more than that, we have to come to a change order, if it's less than that, we typically take care of the change order as well.
And my guess is they're going to replace the roof, and it hasn't been done in a while, it probably needs a lot of sheet plywood on it.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
For some experience.
But if on a barn, you can work from the inside to see.
Get in a...
Pretty good idea of what the area is if you...
We did that when we did Prairie View, and we were pretty close, yeah, right on, just based on bird's eye view. The last one is Fox Bluff, there were two buildings down there, the Spring Barn, and these were asphalt shingles. And that was, this is the one that I was, I was off on in the December estimate. My, I had a contractor look at it in 2018, and that person gave us a cost estimate of $44,000. If you add these two together, it's right around $42,000 or something like that, thousand. So, but we also had a different estimate from an architect. An architect gave us an estimate, and it was a lot higher, so I was worried that I was shooting low. But, so I think we had $75,000 in the estimate in December. So these are obviously, it came in on the right side, which is lower. That's really all we have, again, this is a tool that now gives us prices from a contractor, so recent prices. So we can decide whether we want to move forward with that or not based on this information. So that's really all I have to report.
And we did not put any of those in our budget this current year, so we'll have to go into next year's budget at that point in time.
Yeah, I think that's an ongoing conversation that we need to revisit. And we started with the historic preservation priorities, and as we think about putting our budget together, where we want to commit to.
Right, we need to start that way before the budget. Because these are pretty big numbers.
I'm a little confused. I thought we were, I thought, please correct me. I thought that we hadn't made a decision to restore any of these.
We haven't.
Oh.
That's part of, that's the discussion.
Oh, okay. I know, I was gonna cut that.
Now, now, now we have numbers to go with it, you're exactly right.
Okay, okay.
Seems to me the issue is we have numbers, but we don't have a purpose for these buildings.
Right.
So, and that enters into the issue of what we're gonna do.
But we'll have that discussion as we go forward as to what we're... You know, on the Kennedy home, if it's got several years, anybody can delay that. But for some of these buildings, the discussion is, if you decide not to do anything for a couple of years, that's almost the same as saying, "We're gonna love without them."
So I think we need to tee up, I mean, July, we're gonna start talking about just the budget with Good Calistic Management Plan and other things that is infrastructure that we do have a use for that need repairs and replacements.
Yes, yes.
And then I think we need to think about how and when we had the conversation. Do we do this in July? How do you want to facilitate that? What's the best approach?
And, you know, it's one of these things where I don't really quite remember what we did or talked about, but one of the things is if we decide long-term, McConnell is an area that we might, might have some opportunity to do something, like the living farm, there's some visionary things, but they're out there and they're not even here, we can't really afford right now. We had talked about, I think we had discussed briefly about, is there a quick fix to at least get the thing wrapped? The roof wrapped so that we could buy some time? Did we, I don't remember now if we ended up getting a number on that or not.
We've, we've done that.
We've already done the quick fix?
We, we, we can't wait anymore.
We can't keep doing it.
No, I mean, it, I, we need to make a decision.
The trouble with the quick fix is quite often it will last a few years.
No, no.
And if we're 10 years out from that or whatever, then you're talking like five quick fixes.
Right, but, yeah, right, but we had to also the Historic Preservation Commission come in, and they're, they're anxious about those buildings as well. I was just wondering what kind of timeframe we were looking at.
The, those two big barns, we have to do something now. Now, in the next one year. And I do, I do worry about the hand hewn barn, because it's not only its roof, it's, you know, starting to lean as well. So it's not...
Right. The structure itself is, it's gonna cost a lot more than...
And although we do have a master plan, we don't have the resources to operate. The Fox Bluff has a master plan, but we've taken that further on the Recreation Hall, and there's actually some work that's been done and invested by the district, and that was part of the work that we were looking to. So we've had some additional architectural type of work on that building. And then the Kennedy, again, no use, but it's been plowed. So again, direction would be to, are we looking to, you know, find someone that might lease it, a longer term lease that they could take on the responsibility? Or, you know, so those are all directional priorities that, I mean, we can go on a variety of different ways, it's just a matter of staff and time and...
Some of these we need, if they're gonna survive, we need partners on.
Partners, yeah.
It's not something we're gonna do on our own. You start looking at these, these costs, it's, some group is gonna have to step forward.
All right, anything else, John, on that?
Uh, no.
Thank you very much for all the effort in that, that's looked very enlightening. So that's, that is very helpful for us.
Okay, we're moving along to first reading of mitigation bank credit sales policy. And I see Elizabeth and Andy are on this one.
Well, and it also should be Ed and Gabe, and I'm gonna let, I'm gonna turn it over for Gabe. And Val worked on this, it was a team effort, but I'm gonna let Gabe take it. This would be a policy that's gonna help, we got it all ready to go, and we really need this last piece so we can start selling credits, because there's, it's an opportunity and they're knocking at our door, but we need to be able to follow up on that. So Gabe, why don't you talk a little bit about how you came about this and kind of how this would, you see this working?
He just...
Gabe, we can't hear you.
No, can't hear you, Gabe.
Gabe, take out your headphones. No, I mean, take them out of the computer.
I'll say something.
I'll try.
I'll try.
Hear me now?
Yipper.
Yeah.
Are we there yet?
Okay. So we've been discussing multiple different avenues for figuring out how to actually sell the mitigation credits and had different, a lot of different people reviewing this policy for ways to market, to establish pricing, and then also to coordinate with mitigation banking instrument to make sure that we're following all the different rules. So that's what the precursor was to the credit policy that you're seeing this evening. And was there any specific questions about it?
Why don't you talk a little bit about the pricing team and how this is gonna be brought forward annually? What we're looking to do?
I'm gonna try some different headphones, because I can't hear you guys.
The mic that they hear is coming from there?
Yes.
So part of it's, we're sort of kind of far away from it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. What was the question?
If you could just run through the policy about the sales credit team and how that's all gonna flow and how...
Okay, so, so the, the team would establish a maximum of five people, a minimum of three people, just so you had diverse group and didn't have one person making decisions for negotiations, pricing negotiations. And as it's currently written, the three that are involved, I believe, is the Director of Land Preservation, Coordinator, Natural Research Projects Coordinator, and Director of Finance.
So Gabe, when you get, when there's a request to buy credits, then the team will assemble, right?
So what we were hoping to do is establish a, a price that would be marketed and advertised on the district's website. So that would be the, the base price if somebody wanted to come in and just buy credits, and you wouldn't need to negotiate, they could come in and purchase those credits. So the pricing that was recommended was based on some research associated with the Wetland Restoration Fund with Stormwater Group. Dave, you probably remember that back when we evaluated all the different wetland credits. And then with stream credits, there's not a great reference as far as the market goes. So we used, we did a little bit of research about Ohio's stream credits, with, we ended up recommending pricing based on Indiana's, just because it's closer. And we were able to evaluate some of the watersheds that are similar to McHenry County. And so we were recommending a price range of $500 to $600 per linear foot. $600 per linear foot was what was recommended, and then the $96,000 per wetland credit is what was being recommended as the base price. And then if there was a negotiation, let's say you had some intergovernmental requests. We, we've worked with Mick Dot, for example, on some projects. And if we wanted to have a different pricing for intergovernmental projects, the policy would allow us to do that.
I totally agree with that, especially with Mick Dot, yeah. So Gabe, I have another question, the market for other credits. I mean, who's the competition? Are they all filled up? Have they used their credits? Or is there, there's no stream credits, I bet you, anywhere? But how about wetland credits?
Correct, the, the stream mitigation is in its infancy for the Chicago region. Does exist other places, obviously, as I mentioned, in Ohio and Indiana. But Chicago District is just lagging behind, based on my understanding. The Wetland Bank, we have done a little bit, there's, there's some available. There's not a lot of pricing with, that overt pricing, I should say. It's, it's not really marketed. In the private industry, you can go and negotiate a little bit less transparent than we would need to. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Gabe.
Bill has a question.
Is the wetland credit per acre, per half acre, per square foot?
So the, the wetland is gonna be per acre price, and the stream is per linear foot, that's how it's measured.
And are these credits in perpetuity? In other words, once we sell them, we, we can't resell them or gain any further benefit from them?
Correct, it's one for one.
So one-off, sort of, it's a one-off transaction, transaction.
Right, so, so when there's, when there's a impact, and it's, it goes through the regulatory process, the assessment of the impact based on a number of different factors, quality, acreage, footage, footage of, if it's a stream impact, will be assessed. So then there needs to be a mitigation to offset whatever that impact was.
Thank you.
We have a valuable asset here, and obviously, we have to see what the market is, but I don't think we should underestimate the value of what we have or be sort of...
Or what it might be to, in the future.
Correct, yes, yeah.
And we, we have no way of knowing if these are going up in value at all, like 10% a year or anything like that.
Well, since we're going to have the annual rate... I'm sorry, go ahead, Gabe. We was, we wanna set the price. So behind scenes, we're very transparent, and again, if the market should adjust, the sales process is they put a request, they go to the sales team, and then they'll make a recommendation. So if we see that there's a market adjustment, then we'll have to bring and update that market to the board as well. But we wanted to keep this very transparent in the whole process so that there's no concerns of wheeling and dealing on the side as a governmental entity, right?
Kelly?
I do, so I want to take a step back, since I'm new to this. I, I understand it a little bit. Is this solely when somebody wants the land for development or for roads, and then you sell it per acre? Or can somebody describe the process a little bit more, why we're doing this?
If I understood the question correctly, it was what was the mitigation credit for? Is that what we're asking? The why behind it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so, there's all sorts of reasons for impact. Each, each project has, has different rationale. The, the history of it is to, to offset loss. There's no wetland loss, so that we are gonna be gaining wetland over time. That's the national goal, to, to not lose any more wetlands. So when a development or a pipeline, any, any type of impact occurs, and there, and there's an unavoidable impact to water resources, i.e. the project has to impact them, and the regulatory process says yes, because there is a review that takes place, and they concur that the project cannot move forward without an impact. The way to not have a net loss of the wetland is to have mitigation for those impacts. So the district would be selling these mitigation credits, and what the district could receive in return is, one, we've restored a site, but also compensation for restoring, restoring those acres of wetland.
Okay, so a lot of the work down at, like Randall Road, right, was wetlands. And so they, I think they did some mitigation on site. I think there used to be land conservancy property right there, and then that was turned over to IDA, and then it, and then they have to, but they couldn't do all of it there, so that would be an example too, if they would turn to somebody like us.
So, so there's a number of different types of mitigation. The example that you just referenced was permitting responsible mitigation. So you, when you're, when you're doing a development project, the first thing you want to try and do is avoid. And then they look at doing mitigation on site. So you have the wetland restoration or creation as localized as possible. And then, in the instance that you just referenced, permitting responsible was adjacent land. So the Randall Road impact occurred, and then we did a permitting responsible mitigation with the DOT there to restore the wetlands in that local area. If there's not an opportunity to do those, then you expand that boundary a little bit further, and you do a watershed approach. And the mitigation bank is set up for a watershed type approach.
How many acres of wetland do we potentially have to sell these credits upon?
So the proposal was 22, around 22 acres. I'm just going off memory here, it's in the mitigation banking instrument. But based on our preliminary review, one thing about a bank is the credits need to be certified before they can be sold. So we have to meet a number of performance standards before they meet a performance threshold. And just based on my gut feeling from observing it after one year, which is one of five, so let's just take it for what that is. I, I feel that we'll probably have around 12 acres.
That's awesome.
So, so what's the, um, so I assume there's some upkeep of this over the, over the decades. So do we have to set any money aside to make sure that's taken care of or that?
Yeah, that was last one.
Yeah, so we set aside, I think it was $110,000 for catastrophic disaster. Again, based on my opinion, professional opinion, we're past the disaster point even with the drought. But we still have to have an earmark for the duration of the project.
No, just jump in briefly here. And this is probably a good time to mention that that's one of the primary reasons for the establishment of the LPNR Special Revenue Fund. Funds from mitigation go into that fund because there's long-term management consequences and long-term management responsibilities. So yes, the answer is we do have to manage them in perpetuity. And we have set up that fund to make sure that we're always able to do that.
Once we sell the
Oh, I have to say that if, if you are, if, if Gabe is already thinking that half of the wetland there is already up to standards, I think that's kudos to the design team and the implementation team that got it that way. So I think that's great, everyone. Congratulations. I think that's wonderful.
I guess I'm, my question is, this is like a bank account. We have 12 acres, 20 acres in the bank account. Someone comes along and wants to buy these credits and we're repricing them in some competitive fashion. Will we be depositing more acres into that bank account so that this is a process that is sort of ongoing over the decades? Or is the whole thing sort of a one-off proposition?
No.
And, and Gabe, do you see more wetland restoration among the 25,000 acres that the district owns? That we could eventually sell credits on?
The, the policy is written so that it can be used for any bank. So to answer the first part of that question, yes, it can be used for other banks. The current status is we only have the School Springs Stream and Wetland Mitigation Bank available for sale. So once, once those would be sold, then we're done. As far as opportunities for additional mitigation, we have done some investigations. But we don't have a front runner right now for a mitigation primarily because of not owning enough of watershed to do the type of restoration that's needed. Another thing to, to be aware of, for it to go to a bank, you have to have a minimum of 25 acres of proposed in the beginning to make it worthwhile for the banking regulators to, to approve a mitigation bank. We've done smaller ones that would have been permitting responsible, but a mitigation bank is a higher level and it's compensated as such.
But the work that you've done and the ability of setting it up and working with the core and developing these policies and procedures does make it easier to a next opportunity that would come. You're not starting from ground zero. You've got something to build upon, right? So.
I have a question too. I may, I may have misinterpreted, not misinterpreted, but read it slightly different than Dave did. Dave was saying, we already have 12 that are up to speed. Gabe, I was, when you said we had 22, 12 being ready, I, I guess in some part of me was wondering, did you mean that? Do you think ultimately the, the full 22 would be, be able to grow up to speed? Or are you thinking maybe
My, my gut feeling is that we will not meet the 20 acres long-term performance for hydrology. I'm, I'm pretty, pretty confident based on one year's worth of data. And also in a drought year for the second year, which we're dealing with right now, that we can hit the 12. That's a, that's a comfort level. I could be wrong. I've, I've seen them respond, especially in the type of natural resources that we're dealing here. I've seen other areas where the groundwater just slowly seeps over the years and expands outside of what I could predict it, it would. So it's a, it's a very unique, we're dealing with groundwater fens. So we have a lot of fens out there and it could, it could be somewhere between 12 and 20. I'm just telling you my conservative gut feeling on what I'm confident we can hit.
That's what I thought. That's what I'm telling you. Thank you.
Gabe, would you, would you also comment on the number of linear feet that we'll have available for stream credit?
So that's really the, the bigger part of this bank is, is the stream credit one because it's, it's brand new. The district currently has competitive advantage in the market for this because there's not a lot of stream credit available. And I want to say it's around the 5,000 linear foot range. I, I'd have to look up those numbers exactly, but 4,900, 5,000, something like that.
And you were talking around $600 a foot?
Correct.
Who else?
Is there anything about the process? So we're mapping it out for first reading. Our procedure would be we'll come back next month for second reading. And then next month too, we will present to you when it was passed out and your information is the pricing that we talked about to accept that as our start for the market so we can get these rolling. So if there's any subtle changes or any way how we're handling it, everything will come back to the board. The sales would come back after we get negotiated a contract. So that would be approved at the board level.
Everybody, I think everybody's in agreement with what the process is.
Yeah, but what I've seen so far, I think that
So we'll have first reading next week and a month later, we will be we'll be fine. So I think we're good. And thank you to everyone on the staff. Sounds great. A lot of work, I'm sure went into that. And how many years was that project, Ed?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't catch it, John.
How, how many, how much time, how many years have been put into this project?
Well, the, the project started initially as a permitting responsible. And then we, we were able to move it into a mitigation bank. So I would say we've been working on it off and on, probably for a decade in some form and at least two or three years as a mitigation bank. But that's, this is probably a good time to say that the district's land protection plan has been designed all along to try to capture entire basins of former wetlands. So as time goes on, we've now done the research and the work that's involved in establishing a bank. And I'm pretty confident as we're able to protect key pieces in different areas. We're almost there in a lot of spots. You'll see another bank come your way within the next decade as this one gets sold out.
It won't be on, you said our way. It won't be our way in the next decade, but most of us, unless, everyone wants to come back another time around. But anyway, yeah, that's, that's great. I know there's a lot of effort that's gone into this, a lot of planning and, and I'm sure you're very proud to see that it's, it's coming to a, to a final stage, decision, everybody, yeah, so everything, everything's getting to where it needs to be. So thank you to everyone that's worked on that. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'm going to move on to 5.4, Paddle of Kish.
Okay, I'm going to lead you through this. And so this is a follow-up. We've had two meetings where we discussed this and then some follow-up that occurred with the Paddle of Kish. Our two volunteers, Pat Lawler and Tammy Sadek, that were on the call with the board when we brought it up for the first time. We sat down, we had a great meeting. We pulled out some resources, which I had shared with the board. And of course, the district's commitment to a water trail or to finding and acquiring land along the Kishwaki to protect that has been an ongoing effort. And as we'll get through on a couple of other slides, and you've seen that we're handed out a map that Amy Peters, our funding manager, provided to us, a lot has been protected. This is a document of planning that was done. As you can tell, it's kind of dated because it has our old logo on it. But Open Lands and IDNR, the National Park Service and many others that came together with funding to kind of do this vision that went over both McHenry County and in Boone County on water. And you'll note that at the county line, it identified the district having a parking lot and an access to that area. And of course, there is no public access on this water trail on conservation district property. It was a project that was done in cooperation. And kudos to our operations and public safety team under John's leadership and Amy Peters and working with Mick Dot and the county when they had the necessary improvements to the bridge. Working with Open Lands and the Boone County Conservation District to put the launch improvements on the Boone County side. And of course, we have our parking lot on our side. And that made a wonderful partnership. But the access way down to where the Highway 23 is, which is that dot in McHenry County, nothing else has happened along that way. So that brings us in where some maps that were done, just to kind of share with you. And Amy is online and she can probably speak to these better than I and Val is as well. So the areas that are green that are on your map, those are the acreage that the district has picked up. And you can see the light blue area is the hydrant and water floodplain. And the next map I'll show you shows it even better. But you can tell along the Kish, the property that the district has, a lot of it is very wet. And so when you're planning for any type of public access, there are things that you need to be able to meet. There is stormwater permitting. There is also federal guidelines on the Americans with Disabilities Act, as council had shared with you, that are not our rules or guidelines. Those are outside entities. And when we're reflecting on, you know, the work that's been done along the Nipper Sink and the launches that we have to date, we would not have those same launches today with all the regulations and permits that are in place. And also that we're reminded that being Nipper Sink, we're celebrating 50 years this year and it didn't happen overnight. It was an ongoing process to work us towards to have that wonderful amenity. It took some time. It took some time to acquire a lot of the land that we have that surrounds the Kish. This map, I think, does a good job. It shows a little bit more. And Amy, do you want to highlight this orange to talk about the FEMA floodplain?
Sure. Sure. Can you guys hear me? Because I'm having trouble hearing. Okay. Too much? Okay, yeah, I just, this is the, the width of the floodplain that is surrounds the the, the Kish. And the green is the district property. And you can see the few roads that we have. So it's, it's expansive. It's, it's much different than the Nipper Sink up in the north. And so you'll barely see our little white dot, which is county line, is just barely outside of the orange. Basically, you can't, you can't develop in the orange. Otherwise, you need to go to a mitigation bank and then you need to talk to Gabe.
So Amy, is that the, Amy, is that the 100-year floodplain in orange there?
Um, yes, it's, it's, like I said, it's in different zones.
Okay.
That, that, that outside edge is, is what we would have to stay out of.
Thank you.
So in speaking with Pat Lawler and the Paddle of Kish group and going over the recommendations, I did have another conversation with her this afternoon. And again, Tammy is online. Kat had another meeting. But one of the things that we had identified very early on, just out of fairness and not to set precedent, was to request that the group formally became organized and register with the state of Illinois. Our other user groups, the snowmobile clubs, the equestrian groups, even our glacial park, you know, our Steve patrols that come out that have a request to us, they've all done this. And so we think that that's a reasonable expectation. And she agreed today during our conversation that they would go ahead and do that. So that's step one. That's what we asked initially. That formalizes it. And then that way, then they are able to seek out, get an insurance. And we discussed either with the Illinois Catlin Council or the American Canoe Association. They do have some insurance opportunities. And if not them, they may be able to just shop out with another insurance broker. Again, don't know what the cost is, but they do have a fiscal sponsor with the Natural Lands Institute. So I mean, once they're organized, I think that's all possible. We also discussed that should they need some assistance or once they're incorporated, then that would be a grant request that they could put through us or to the foundation, our foundation, that could help enable them to do that. So with that, provided that the board is agreeable, understanding the challenges that are in front of us, it doesn't mean that the opportunity doesn't exist. But speaking with our team, the district does not have appropriate land holdings at this point to put another public canoe launch on. So they can clear it. And then if they do that, that means that we give them a license to come through and we would have to set the guidelines on how they would handle the, the trees and the clearing, that they would assume full risk and liability. We cover that up to protect the district. And then they have to commit to the regular maintenance of that. I think the phase two for that, we will have to have some ordinance types of changes that we will need to make if they are inviting public to come through district property, even though they're putting in down at Lyons Park and Union or with the city of Marengo. If they're going to be coming through our lands, we're going to have to make some adjustments. So we'll have to work on that and come back to the board with what those changes would be from a policy perspective. And then lastly, if they would work, we think it's really important to help us with the citing, if there was to be a public access area, then we need a plan. We need a plan that would show where that could happen and what needs to be acquired. On some of the areas that they had identified, as you know, we've got another groundwater contamination issue down there on one of those areas with 300 West Arnold Engineering. And I would say that property right now, the district is not doing anything until they work through those issues. So I think it's a planning, but again, we don't have resources. So this would be something that's up to the board. If this is something that you want us to move forward with a planning, citing a public access or land acquisition, it would be something that we would need to give direction. And, but we can at least get a license if that's agreeable with the board and, and at least accomplish that.
So phase one is not
Public access.
No, but it's not a lot of time. It's not going to take a lot of time and the first phase is not difficult.
No, it, it will just, it's a policy change. It's getting a license and working through that and that's came to work. I think it's the commitment, once that starts, understanding what's going to come next, right? It's going to be an expectation.
Do we have a timeframe on what would be expected next? From them or what they, what they're hoping? If they go to the, if they go to the effort of becoming licensed or whatever the proper term is for that, what are they expecting in the timeframe after that? When somebody says that it happened, that was that laid out in the meeting at all, what they were hoping for?
We didn't. They just agreed that they would go ahead and see if they'd be on, working to incorporate to be official. And I think that would have to sit down with staff and we'd go through our ordinances, what would need to be changed. But again, we wanted to get the board's determination consensus wise, are you agreeable with that direction?
Bill?
Do the FEMA restrictions regarding the floodplain, I mean, do they restrict? Are they so restricted, you could not have a walking path to the stream bed across the floodplain? I mean, I imagine they don't want a parking lot and they don't want permanent structures. And I'm just, you know, guessing from the map, you know, that in some places, the floodplain would south side would be 1,000 feet. Would extend for 1,000 feet from the creek on our property. So if, could there be a walking path to the creek? And if someone wished to carry their kayak 1,000 feet? Does FEMA allow that?
Yes and no. You would have to mitigate. You would have to, it would be if you, if you added any type of material, you would have to mitigate the, that additional material that you put in that floodplain. And in order to make it ADA, grass unfortunately is not an ADA surface. So, you know, we could, so, so we would have to. And it's manageable. I mean, but like you said, it would be a long way. And so it's a little bit more complicated. And so it's a little bit more complicated than just would FEMA allow it.
What if you said, well, okay, this is the hundred-year floodplain, you know, 99% of the time, you could walk on this path and not be too disruptive. Does that allow any sort of flexibility in this type of mitigation? In other words, mitigate for the hundred-year worst-case scenario, that's one thing. If you say that, well, we're going to shut the path down if we get two inches of rain and let it dry out and then you'll have access again. In other words, are there ways to work with these regulations that are still consistent with conservation principles, but also allow some modified access for, you know, capable people who want to take advantage of it?
Yes. It just comes at a cost. We can boardwalk. We can, we've done a number of different ways of that. But like I said, it's less of a FEMA floodplain. It becomes a, again, it's a cost.
Amen, Amy.
So I kind of, is it okay? All right. So I kind of see this in two phases anyway. So the first phase is really allowing them access so they can do their work. Is whether or not we can figure out phase two, they still want to be able to clear so that people can at least use the river, right?
That's the way I'm understanding, is that right? Well, so they're, phase one is going to let them get it cleared and they can use the river and...
Because they can just go by, you know, they can do that. But then that doesn't force our hand to actually come up with something in phase two, which just allows us to let them do what they're wanting to do. And then we still have time to figure out if there's a way to do it.
So we're going to have to somewhat with our general ordinance, which mitigates, because they're interceding through district property, right?
Right.
Okay. So we're going to have to make some adjustments to those ordinances to allow that. And right now, you stay on the trail, you stay, so we're going to have to have some designation of that area. I think we want to be conscientious about how we label it and be different to what we say, you know, we're not encouraging, you know, for example, with the Nipper Sink, we have launches, we're encouraging the public, we're inviting under these conditions. So we're going to have to make a determination of how we're going to use appropriate language under our general use ordinance. As long as we allow them to come through where district land is and we modify that within our ordinance policy, so our law enforcement knows how to police it, we know how to manage it, then whether they're in at Lyons Park or whether they're getting into the city of Marengo or whether they're in at the county line, which is at Boone County, they're coming whichever way they're coming. It's just we don't have a place for them to put in or put out on district.
Right. So you just mentioned something that made me realize something. So that maybe Andrew had mentioned, and that is if we allow them access to do the work, to do the clearing, then does that, in your talking, we have to use some kind of something with the ordinance? Does that mean that we have to allow other people to use that as access as well? Because that wasn't something that Andrew had written.
Well, I think, and we have to have Andrew clarify, but it's my understanding that we can issue a license for them to take care of and do the work to clear it. But we're not inviting the public on through our land to get on there to go canoeing, right? We're not ready for that.
So you can do separate...
But the public is doing that now, right?
Well, we're not inviting them.
We're not inviting them, but it's happening.
Yeah. Public or this group?
They are the public.
No, no, I understand that this, I know that they're public, but it is different. Are we talking about them coming on and doing the clearing or we're talking about individuals who are not associated with them?
I'm sure there's individuals that use the Kish just to paddle them. And then there's this group that's doing some clearing. So there's activity going on, the Kish, with or without our blessing.
Well, they can be on the Kish without our blessing, they just can't access it through us.
Right. And we're going to give them, by issuing them a license to a group that's legal, then we are assigning to them responsibilities for their group of identifying however that looks like. They're going to, we're going to allow them to do that. But that's not an all invite, just like if something is coming to do work, it's not the general public.
It is happening anyway. So we're going to narrow it down to a group that's going to have some responsibility.
Accountability to...
Right. Which seems to me somewhat better than having people just going out there, because this group would help police it somewhat, I would think. Not that they legally have to, but if somebody else is going out, something that shouldn't happen.
Yeah. I just think it's really gray.
Well, yeah.
It's really, how can you, you know, I don't know.
So to, so if they're putting in and where they're going right now, they've got two areas they're clearing. So you can see from our land holdings, we hold not everything, but we hold most of the land from 23 as we go down to the county line.
And she told us, but where are they coming in on here?
Let's see. Where is Lyons Park and Marengo? Amy, is that even on here? Is this one even?
I don't even know.
No, we did not identify anything that was not district. But Marengo is, you know, to the, the red, the red is Marengo. So if you go straight up, it's Deer Pass is the last road that's on the map. Yep. That's, that's, that's our Deer Pass. And then the next one in would be 23, which runs, yep, 23. Yes. Yep. And then the next road over that's full, you know, that's Thorn.
Okay.
Does that help?
Union is not on the map. It's off the map to the east, yes.
Correct. And that, right, and the railroad, the railroad is the big black line, you know, to the south.
So we've got a lot of property, as you can see with the green, but there's the floodplain. And so if they get in down here, that means that they need to paddle, they're going to have to come through us, we're going to have to have an ordinance, probably classify or permit if, even if the general public, if they're inviting the public. I mean, the private, the work that's done on private property, a private landowner is allowing individuals from the public on their land and they, they're not a public entity. The city of Marengo is a public entity. And again, whatever their risk management and how they're handling that, I can't speak to that. I can only speak what recommendations and best practices and what our attorney would say is from a prospective perspective. So we don't have, and if they're in off of the launch that we've got a parking lot for, that's on Boone County side.
So most people that get in at county line road, do they head west, most people? That's what I was...
I didn't hear that.
So is that correct, Amy?
I'm sorry, you cut out. Can you say again, where they access?
They access a county line road, most of them head west. I'm assuming that's the way the water is flowing.
Yes, they're going to Boone, Boone County.
That's, that launch is not really affecting us much.
They would probably be taking out there if they launched in Marengo or Union or off of some private landowner.
Correct.
Right. So it's, in my estimate, between Highway 23 and county line road is six miles by the crow and maybe a little longer on the water. That's a pretty good float. And there is no access at 23 at this point. So if they're putting in further east of that, well, they have...
Well, they're always the Union.
They have several miles.
Yes.
Up to 10 miles.
So are we trying to look for consensus amongst us to see about a phase one? Is that what we're trying to do?
I believe that's what she's really asking, yes.
Yeah.
What, phase one is for them to get licensed, right? We don't have any, they can do what they want.
Well, also for us to put together what we're like, legally, what we're going to allow.
For a lot of real... We would have, we would give them, they would incorporate. I would come back to you with what a special permit agreement would be to allow. So we'd start working with council for that. And then we would also then take a look at not just clearing, but if they're going to be having, if we are going to allow, we don't have public access, but if we're going to allow the public in some destination that they're going to come through district land, we're going to have to adjust our ordinances or make a determination. So we're going to have to come back to you on that, to clean that up. So that if they are inviting someplace else, otherwise we say no and, you know, you can't cross here. And then there's no purpose of cleaning it if we're not going to allow them to cross.
So I think is consensus, I think one has got some questions and I don't know about everybody else, really, are we fine with phase one to see how that turns out? And you could come back with something that we would end up turning down or you would recommend that we turn down, maybe as we get into it further.
Are you going to spend a lot of time, getting prepared on this phase one and attorney fees and stuff?
Well, there's going to be attorney's fees. You know, we've got, we're going to have to take a look at a review and take a look at our ordinances and how we would best tweak it. So again, I don't think it is as labor intensive as, or cost is planning a site, but I think we need to be going into it. I think the board just has to understand that that access piece, that we're going to have to be prepared. And then, you know, how you designate something, there's expectations and it's not only this user group, but it's the general public's expectations on what we're able to do. So as long as, I mean, the vision's there, the land's been acquired, you know, there's an opportunity, it's just we've got to figure out the puzzle with the resources that we have.
It looks to me like phase one is doable, phase two may be a long way off.
And that, because I feel like, I mean, and there's, I'm sure, and please, please correct me, it's just my feeling that we have a plan. This wasn't in the plan. Now, when they want it in the plan, it's like we're jetting off. We're not, we're not staying on the path. So that, that's my first concern, is that we're going off our plan. And the second one is, is I think I would need, I don't like gray. I think it's really a gray area. Because how can you say these people can go in and then this John Doe sees whatever and, oh, I'm going there too. And then tell, tell a friend, tell a friend, tell a friend, and there, we've got public going in on the land. So those are my, those are mine. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, but I think it's to your point, because I mean, at some point, we need to identify what we're not going to do. Because while this first phase, I do think it puts a lot more on planning, Amy and everybody, but we have to take something off the table, something has to come off the table.
Right, right. So...
Well, I'm...
I don't think it's not a bad idea down the road.
Well, this started in 2006, okay? I mean, so we're just nudging it a little further along with our phase one. I'll be dead and gone before phase one B or anything like that, but...
Just don't say that.
In other words, I don't worry about gray, you know, because lots of things are not in focus and yet we get up every day and we do the best we can. So I don't know. This, to me, seems very consistent with the activities of the district and vis a vis the public and the use of a natural resource. So we're not allowing, we're not breaking any of FEMA's rules by phase one. We're just sort of looking at some preliminary steps. We may never get to phase two. But Linda, and I don't worry too much about adding and subtracting from the five-year plan because it's, you know...
It's fluid.
It is fluid.
I look at this as a possibly phase one of clarifying. Like, that's the way I look at it anyways, that after we go through legal and we go through the discussions with this group, it gives us an opportunity to say, okay, this is what we can do, this is what we can't do, this is what you can do and you can't do. And I think we get there versus whether they're just out there doing things on their own and we're not really participating in the discussion. So that's what I'm hoping for, is that there is clarity by the time we're done with it. That would be my hope.
Now, with managing expectations too, if this group, and we're hopeful that, you know, their commitment to being river keepers continues, but again, build it and they shall come, and then that group discontinues their active involvement, then, then the expectation, it's on your doorstep. And so, you know, at that point, is the district resource available, ready to pick it up? Will there be public pressure to continue to take it on? I mean, those are things that we deal with all the time. I mean, no different with snowmobile, equestrian, hiking. I mean, it's district-wide, there's a lot of ones.
Yeah, we've talked, we've talked about this, is, okay, we've got this group now and if five years from now they disband them or we have, or they have...
So, but these are, again, the vision's there. It was, you know, the tactic on our strategic plan was to work on a way to facilitate their ability to continue to clean. So by doing that, and then the focus on our comprehensive site development public access plan that was done in 2008, did have, you know, a pool launch, there's other amenities that were envisioned to eventually go down at the county line road. They have not been built either, just again, out of resources. We did not, you know, we weren't adding new. We've been working on maintaining what we have. But no doubt, I don't, staff, you know, sees the vision, you know, we've been working towards that. The boards, past boards have been working towards the vision. It's just we've got to take steps to get there.
I move that we recommend that we go through phase one, then see where that takes us.
I guess we're not doing motions, but...
A consensus.
A consensus. Is you would be a yes. Bill's a yes.
Your consensus.
And you're still a yes. Linda, is are you a yes on phase one or at least a little look forward to it, but a little reluctant, I don't know. So, okay, so I think you've got a consensus that the board would...
John, I would say I'm not part of that consensus, but if the majority of the board wishes to do that, then I will support that.
What are your concerns?
Mine? We've left 6.1, $3 million on the table. Staff's already got plenty on their plate. They're a wonderful group. They're very committed to conservation, but I don't want to see staff spending the time. Phase one, I guess it'd be okay, but then I would end it at phase one. That's my opinion.
That's where I'm at, Davis. I guess I'm a little further along in the phase one than you are, but I'm, at phase one is, yeah, we can get some commitments and see where everybody's at, but it seems like phase two is, we don't even own all the correct property at this point in time.
I agree with that, John.
To Dave, just, I'm going to throw this in there, because to Dave's point, I mean, no matter what we do, at some point, no matter what the projects are, we have to come to some kind of decision or understanding of how we move forward with regard to levy and our ability to pay for what we're trying to do and get a clearer understanding of what we want to commit to going forward to actually help pay. Whether it's the Kish or something else, we have to, we have to address that. And I think that gets to Dave's point about what, what resources do we have going forward.
I think July will probably kick that off.
Oh, we will start it all over.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I think you're only a month away from getting your wish of having a discussion.
Yeah, I think the other thing too, and these would be some of the things that would go into the special permit or license agreement, you know, they talked and they shared how they've been removing some of the downed, and either they let them, what they can downstream, some they are putting them over onto the banks and they're throwing them over, and then others, they're just allowing to go to the bottom of the river. So, and some of them are larger and they're very difficult to pull out there. So there's other things, so we're going to have to, from a resource perspective, when it's on land, because if it's in the floodplain and they're not getting rushed, if they're, it floods, so the pieces are going to be coming off and, you know, they will be ending up somewhere else, right?
Absolutely. Plus, or they've become obstacles in the middle of the river on the way by.
Well, by, you know, by engaging with this organization and... Well, by, you know, by engaging with this organization and being sure that they understand the rules of FEMA and floodplains and so forth, perhaps they'll be less enthusiastic, and they'll say, you know, this is more than we're capable of dealing with, and, and so then there's less pressure on the district to, you know, to support something, and it's impractical. But I think.
We've got a clarification.
Here you will, and, you know, this, yeah, right, right.
So the, so what I heard you was to, to work on the ordinance and the license, and they work on their part to become a legal entity. One of the things that we also encouraged them was to raise some funds to assist with doing, and again, for future, so I don't know if we wanna spend time, but to do a feasibility study. And again, a feasibility study would require staffing to be part of that feasibility team.
Is that Phase One B or C?
So that's, that's later.
I think you can tell, you know, if we get beyond Phase One A, then some dollars are going to be spent. And if you're serious, think about how you might raise some of those dollars.
Yeah, I think that one's a ways out.
But at least you plant, you've let them know that, in a sense, this isn't a free, free ride for them from a financial point of view. I know they're willing to work and donate time, but you're also saying other organizations that the district works with do contribute money in some fashion, they have fundraisers. So be thinking how you're gonna do that, because it's, it could be a stumbling block or a jumping off place.
So from a staff perspective, when would that be? When would the recommendation for a feasibility study come in?
Well, I mean, right now, we've got, the team that would be involved with that planning would be our planning department, we have two people in our planning department, and, and they're working on a lot of other projects, considering things being in maintenance mode. So, you know, time has to be created, and so that means, right now, they're working on the strategic initiatives that, so that's not there. So I would say, and I'd have to look to Amy to say, where does this go in? And what are the other things that are sitting on the shelf that have not been brought, that have been on a plan? You know, not that this isn't on a, it was on a long-range plan, but there's other things that are backlog. So, okay.
I think we need to be told, you know, what's, what's being happened, you know, what's happening because of this.
I mean, if your question would be, go back to John and Amy and say, and, and those that are involved in natural resources, because everybody has their different perspective when these things are done, you know, what becomes that window of opportunity when something like this could have resources? Again, we're so backlog, so that's been the challenge.
Yeah, I think you'd have to give us some time to come up, you know, we don't know exactly the scope, and, and, and once that got a little bit more defined, and we'd be able to then assess and say, yeah, when, you know, how can we be creative with time? I can't answer that question right now, I don't have the answers.
Some of the things, it's kind of like, I was trying to think of a visual when you go through our planning team and, and a lot of things, and it happens with our natural resources too, but it's almost like a funnel. You know, these ideas and these things come out of this large area, and it's all gonna come through down this little, and then it's, it's just a matter, and then it gets stuck, and then it can open back up again. But it does have to flow through that, no pun intended, to get all these things to, because their efforts to be involved and to do it from a coordinated planning saves the district a lot of money and resources at a later date because it's done right, right? So it's not trying to overcomplicate things, we don't wanna overcomplicate, but just there's, are some basic things that would need to be done, and they're required.
Good. Do you think, also, must tonight, I don't know, so.
No, I think, so consensus I got, to just to repeat, to work with the group, see if we can vague it and move to be incorporated, and we work on some language and some ordinance policy changes that would allow that to come back.
We'll see.
And I don't, I don't have a time for you of how long that will be, it's a matter of what they commit to, and then what we run around through.
Sure, yeah, it's how often you can have time to meet with them, they have time to meet with you, and how early schedules work out.
But I know they're appreciative and, and very happy, and they were eager to finally take that next step.
And I, yeah, and I, you know, we're already into June here, so I'm thinking that, you know, if we're gonna get through this summer, probably not, too much more happening. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Do you have a report, a technical director's report, that's where we're at?
I do, just really briefly here, so Water Forum, we'll send out a link, but that's tomorrow night, and it's all by Zoom this year, so that should be really good. And being that we haven't had much rain, and, and the importance of groundwater and wells and recharge is, is pretty important, so looking forward to participating in that. I will also, and having several team members, but I wanted to announce, on July twenty-seventh, there is a Dialogue on the Future of Food, Farming and Conservation, and this is being done in collaboration with the Farm Foundation and the Open Lands. It's in Holiday Inn in Crystal Lake, and it's on the twenty-seventh, it's an all-day. I will be speaking on one of the panels, I believe Dan Volkers is gonna be speaking, and it should be a really good conversation that day, as well as, they will be doing one in Will County, but this is specifically targeted, so I will send you a link.
It's June twenty-seven.
And June twenty, July twenty-seventh, I'm sorry, July twenty-seventh. And we wanna make sure that our farmers, at least land, attend, other members of the farm community, anybody else that's interested in conservation, that they attend the, that day, it should be pretty good. Then we've got a nutrient stewardship field day, just to put it on your calendars, I'll send it out. This is year two, we did this last year. John did a great job in teaming up, and Gabe did a great job in, in presenting the bioreactor site. And that was with the McHenry County Farm Bureau and University of Illinois, and the Illinois Farm Bureau, and that's on August twenty-fourth, and that's from ten to twelve. So if you're interested in stopping by to see that project, obviously, we've had volunteers doing data collection this year and helping, so we're, you're one year into it, and let's see how that project is, is going along.
Has there been plenty of volunteers, plenty of help on that?
So far, so good. Ed, how are our volunteers? Brad?
I think I may have Brad fill that one, but the last I heard, we're doing fairly well.
Yeah, we're actually having them collect the data, which is fantastic. So, yeah, that's a huge help, it's just another piece of data that we collect. We're getting water quality information, and the bioreactor's working. And we're actually, and our farmers would know this, we're very lucky we put in a large drain tile because smaller drain tiles are not flowing now, so the bioreactor would be rendered useless if there's no water flowing through it. But because it is on a large tile, water's still flowing through the bio, bioreactor, so it's, it's working quite well.
And there, it is, uh, there, there is a positive impact, correct?
Yeah, I think it's between twenty and twenty-five percent of the nitrogen load is being taken out, so they're actually sampling the water as it comes into the bioreactor, and taking another water sample as it, as it leaves the bioreactor, just before it enters the creek. So there is nitrogen being removed from the, from the drain tile water.
How about phosphorus, Brad, any news on that?
Uh, I, you know, I, I'll, all we've had is reports on, on nitrogen, we'll have to look at the phosphorus as well. I think we have that data, but we'll have to look at that a little more closely. And I don't know, Dave, to be honest with you, sorry.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Fiftieth anniversary, so obviously next Tuesday night, we've got a lot of guests coming for that. So that should be a lovely time. And then we are doing a fiftieth anniversary celebration at PhilPro Triple R on August fourteenth, and from eleven to two, and we're looking at having remarks from the board and, and any special guests that join us at twelve o'clock noon on that date. So a good photo opportunity and to be out there. There's a lot of great activities that are being planned, using the site, pulling up some old memorabilia that has been stored away and flashbacks, so some great things, and it should be for a fun day. And then to attend to some of the conversations that we've had, had a great day on Friday doing the orientation with our new trustee, trustee Gayton. And I know that many of you, just to get out and do some more field sites would be great, but we're gonna have our teams start to come in and do a little showcase for you. What we're gonna look for in July is our budget conversations, so we can go over some general guidelines with openings, act, boy, ethics, and some of that basic stuff that the board should have, get banned. And then in August, we'll showcase our marketing education team and operations and public safety, followed in September by land preservation and natural resources. And then due to the audit that's ongoing with Andy and all the things we'll do in October, we'll do administration and finance, and we can maybe touch upon some of the fund accounting at the July meeting while we're talking about the budgets, everybody has a good understanding of that. And we'd love to get a time with the foundation too to do a joint meeting. They, I don't be here next week, but that would be great to do another collaboration together this year.
July or August, August probably, July's probably, or August forty.
So we had done that orientation a couple of years ago, is this in lieu of doing something like that?
Right, they'll come in during the cow, and they'll do the presentations, they'll be, you know, depending on the, the size of the team and the number of divisions. So instead of doing a one day, it spaces it out, and then they'll make it during the meeting that's already existing.
Just a chance to meet if you, if you want to try, which is great.
And giving everybody, again, we were attentive to when could they plan to do this. They shared that the board was looking at doing something this sooner than later to get everybody up to speed, but we have a lot of, a lot of things going on, so we have to be respectful of that.
So Ray, what sites did you get to see on Friday?
Uh, we went to a bunch.
Oh, did you, did you?
Yeah, we, we went to the Hollows, we went over to, I can't remember, but we went on County Line. We went through a bunch in Cary. Yeah, so we went through a large portion of them, but obviously there are way more that we didn't get to see. But it was, it was a good day.
I've never been to the Hollows yet.
All right, so we need to do more of, of that site visit. And then, Amanda, we also wanna get you, next month, we will be bringing back, we're in the process of the Bison Agreement, and so we'll have that teed up for you. We still would like to get a field day out of whoever would like to go with us at Bison. And now that things are opening up, maybe you'll find a time.
Okay, anything else on your report?
That is all I have.
That's all you have. Okay, anyone, anyone else have anything they'd like to talk about tonight? Seeing nothing, how about the public? Public, you have anything they'd like to speak about at this point in time?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, so there's nothing there. I can do a adjourn. Bill has that motion, and Linda has the second, a roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Bryan?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Yes, we are adjourned.
Happy weekend, everybody.